All right. Call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Let's see, Candy, do we have a quorum, please?
Yes, sir. We have present Councilmember Contreras, Councilmember Gillivan, Councilmember Runnbaum, Councilmember Kremel. Absent are Mayor Moss and Councilmember Young.
All right. Thank you. This time, will you stand with me for a moment of silence and then our pledge? All right, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have you seen? All right. First, we have a public comment. Mr. Dotson, if you'd like to come to the stand, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Chad Dotson, 12th through 6 San Vast Road. I might get better at speaking one of these days if I keep coming up here, but anyways. I'd like to first talk about the Norris Ordinance, and I just was kind of curious why that hasn't made it to the agenda. That's basically all I want to say about that. The other one is last city council meeting, y'all talked about the new city hall, you know, maybe possibly built, you know, looking at building out or getting the land. But I was kind of taken aback by all that because we were struggling even to afford to pay for two additional police officers. So I just don't see how that can be possible when we can't, we were struggling to like even do that part with police. So I guess that's it on that, and I guess I'll talk about the other certificate obligations when y'all open that up for public here. Thank you, Council, for your time.
Thank you for giving. All right, next item on the agenda is to approve the city council meetings from the regular meeting from May 10, 2022. Do I have any motion or discussion?
Make a motion that we approve the meeting from May 10, 2022.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be to not reappoint the current municipal judge, court judge, to another two-year term. Mr. Grimes?
Yes, our contract with Judge Gaunt ended in April, and per state statute, we have 91 days to either renew or non-renew, or excuse me, to not renew. If we do not, let me have her phrase this, if we do not non-renew her contract, it will automatically roll over on the 91st day. Staff's recommendation is to non-renew the contract with Judge Gaunt, and we ask for you guys to authorize us to start running a replacement immediately.
All right, thank you. Discussion?
I'd like to thank Judge Gaunt for her time serving the municipal court. I really appreciate it, and I know that people in Willow Park appreciate it as well.
Also, I follow in with Eric on that. She also did rotation for the county, so for arraignment, so I talked to one of the county judges today, and he basically went forward to thank you for what she's done there, too.
I move to non-renew the municipal court agreement with Judge Carol Gaunt and instruct staff to begin an immediate search for a candidate for appointment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. All right, next will be to consider all matters incident related to approving and authorizing publication and posting a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation in an amount not to exceed formally in $250,000 for the purpose of designing, constructing, acquiring, improving, enlarging, and equipping the city's municipal drainage utility system, including any repair, replacement, and relocation of streets and utilities in connection therewith, and the acquisition of land and right-of-way therefore, and professional services rendered in relation to such projects and the financing thereof, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining here, thereto. I believe we have a public speaker on this as well?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson? Brian, you open it?
No, it's not a public hearing. It's just an agenda item. Yes, on the certificate obligations for forming an quarter, I'm opposed to that as well as the new city hall building. Though I'm not opposed to the new police officers being hired because we do need that. But then again, we struggled when we were trying to put on the two police officers. The reason I oppose is our current economic situation in the U.S., and I don't think it's wise at this time to start taking on if more debt after we've already approved, I think it was 5.6 or 7 million for roads. I just, I just don't see, it doesn't make sense, though I might not be privy to everything as far as the financials as the city manager and working the numbers, but that's all I wanted to say about that.
Thank you. Mr. Grimes?
Yes, a couple of things. One, to your point, Mr. Dotson, so this is not going to come out of the general fund, which is what pays for police officers. The general funds stretch pretty tight. We're limited in how many, how much revenues we can actually bring in. A side note on the city hall, it's the interest and sinking fund, so again, that's not the general fund per se. This will be paid for, is actually a revenue bond over the last, when did we start the process of drainage utilities? What, January of '21?
Sometime in '20.
Yeah, maybe in the fall of '20. The city of Willow Park made drainage a public utility, and we assessed fees accordingly to that. We have been collecting those fees from homeowners probably for a little over a year.
October?
Yeah. I thought we collected a little bit in the first, we started October 1st, fiscal.
October 1st.
Since the start of this fiscal year, we've been collecting fees. We currently have about $220,000 in that fund. We tasked Derek Turner to come up with a number of projects to address, I don't want to say every drainage situation in Willow Park, but I'm comfortable with saying over 90%. Is that a good number?
That's fair.
Yeah, roughly 90% of the drainage problems that we have in the community. Some are small, some are large, but, but this will, will take care of a lot of them. Like Mr. Dotson, there is some pause here. I still think we need to go, we need to move forward with the notice of intent to issue debt. Just to be clear, that's not, we're not actually issuing debt tonight. What we are effectively doing is we're going to put an ad in the newspaper saying that on August the 9th, we will issue debt in an amount not to exceed 4.25 million, I believe is what's in the notice. Four million of that's for construction, and roughly 250,000 are for soft costs, attorney's fees, financial advisors, processing fees is what we'd call it. I will say with the conversation with our financial advisor this morning, he has an interest rate in there. We have two schedules. It's up there on the, on the field, but y'all have a hard copy in front of you. He's got a 15-year note and a 20-year note. At this time, I'm going to recommend a 20-year note. We're roughly bringing in, we're going to bring in roughly 330,000 in drainage fees this year. That number will go up as we add more properties. We, for example, we added 200 homes in April through various developments. Clearly not, they're not on the books, and we're not collecting that money yet. But those fees should go up as more commercial development comes in, those fees will, will go up as well. The sweet spot for me is trying to keep this under, near or under 300,000 a year in debt service payments. That would leave us a little retention every year for minor projects that may come up that we could address. But speaking with Eric Maha, he, he projected a 4.14% interest rate. Some of the inflationary costs, if you will, that's already baked into this estimate, and this is just an estimate. This is not the final number. Some of those inflationary costs are already built in. We do have a provision to go out to 25 years if we wanted to. I'm not really prepared to say I want to go that far yet on a 25-year note, but we do have the option to do that and explore that. We'll know a whole lot more about interest rates, I'd say, in the next 48 hours after the Fed meets. We'll know a lot more in their July meeting. We've heard anything from 100 to 150 basis points. That's a point, point and a half increase. So that could change what we do here, but I do not think it should stop us with going through with the notice. The notice of intent is just that, it's our intent to issue debt. Clearly, we will, we will do whatever council wishes as far as this issue goes, but I do think that we need to go ahead and proceed tonight. And effectively, all we're doing, Mr. Dotson's putting that in the paper, saying on August the 9th, we're going to have a meeting. Here's what we're looking to discuss. This is the first step. It's a procedural step. We have to take this action tonight, or we can't issue debt at all. And we do have some drainage issues that we need to address that, that we'll need to issue some debt for. So, well, all that being said, one last thing, there's a calendar on here. Issue debt tonight. There's some procedural steps that we'll do. The only action from council will be on August the 9th at our, at our council meeting. That's when we'll actually issue the debt itself. We probably will close sometime in September, and so those are, that's the process involved. Is there any questions?
Can we talk about some of the top projects we're looking to tackle with this?
Sure.
If you do issue the debt?
Sure, sure. Eric, you want to, can you speak to the top four or five, or?
So this is, these are projects that are included in your capital improvement plan, which has just been updated. Those projects haven't changed significantly from four years ago or so when we completed the last CIP, but the major projects are the drainage channel that comes off of the property to the east, the ranch to the east, and comes down, oh, near Fox Hunt, Fox Hunt Trail turns, and comes all the way down to El Chico, and then goes over across Pleasant Ridge. That's a, one of the biggest drainage ways in town that's not a creek or a river, and it needs some work. And at the end of that, on Pleasant Ridge, is a pretty good-sized culvert that's eroded away, and that's actually a separate project, but it's part of that same system. The culvert on San Vast that crosses right north of Meadow Place Estates is, is a very large culvert, and it's, it's undermined underneath, so. Those two, the drainage where the, next to the chamber and where the, kind of the big marsh is, that's always been an area, has been for a long time. It's been an area where it doesn't drain through well, and it backs up and keeps that area kind of marshy. That's one of the other major projects. And then the drainage, there's a, you can see a culvert on Chuck Wagon that's got rocks over it that was kind of temporarily put in place that carries quite a bit of drainage coming down off Chuck Wagon. And so that's another one. And then one up here on San Vast where there's a little chant, little swell that comes across from San Vast to, to Stagecoach and, and crosses right where the creek is that goes by the new public facilities building. That's a drain, that's a flooding problem. It backs up on the north side of San Vast and floods that area, and so that is the other one. The rest of them are pretty much drainage ditch, minor culverts here and there.
Mr. Grimes said you identified probably 90% of the, the issues around. What, what portion of the 90% will this 4.25 million cover if we begin? Some of that, you think this takes 25% of the issue, 50%? Are we looking, what are we looking at more in the future as we continue to, to look at drainage issues?
You mean after this project is undertaken and complete?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you're really, unless something else occurs that, that we don't know about, you're really talking about, you know, regrading ditches, roadside ditches, driveway culverts, small, small street crossing culverts, things like that. And a small portion of those is that. Like I said, even those items within the amount that we're currently talking about in the scope that we're, we've been discussing, most of that would even be done under that amount, so.
Okay.
And by the way, the one I didn't mention, which is another pretty significant project, is Crown Point Boulevard where the, the channel comes through, it goes by the assisted living. That's a really significant issue there, and that's one of the ones that's included in this.
Any further questions or discussion? Thank you. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
We do. Do we have a motion?
I move to pass a resolution approving and authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation as presented.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. All right, next, we have for approval of contract for food, pool, and hotel motel inspections. Bill?
Council Dwayne Barrett is, is the current health inspector. He has been for the last 10 years. Last contract was signed by him in 2012. In that time, basically, he's charging $75 per inspection, and he's done that for the last 10 years, $75. In the new agreement, he is requesting a $100, basically. There's few items in there, plan review and things that are a little bit different, but he's requesting another $25 per inspection. And so we, the staff, we're recommending after 10 years and the cost of gasoline and things like that, that this be approved tonight by council.
Thank you. Discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve contract for food, pool, hotel and motel inspections to increase by 25% per inspection.
$25 per inspection?
Yeah.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. All right, next item, to adopt a resolution of the city of Willow Park suspending the June 17, 2022 effective date of Encore Energy Delivery Company's requested rate change to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates, approving cooperation with the steering committee of cities served by Encore to hire legal and consulting services, and to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation and appeals, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel for the steering committee. Pat?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. The Encore has filed an application seeking additional revenue system-wide that will basically increase residential rates in the city of Willow Park at 11.2% and a 1.6% increase in street lighting. So I recommend that basically we suspend these rates by passing this resolution, and it will give us time to work with our consultants who will negotiate with Encore to determine whether these rates are reasonable or not. And so this is basically a, something that's being done by all the cities that are part of the Encore served cities. I recommend we pass it. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer it.
So Encore's the carrier, so we're kind of locked in to having to work with them with any rate correction.
Correct.
Pat, when's the last time that they took a price increase?
They do it almost every year.
Okay, but this year, they want to do 11.2?
Yeah. Yeah, they do. Encore has a number of rate mechanism processes, but this is the latest one. And so, again, some of these revenues are probably reasonable, but this process, we get reimbursed for our reasonable rate expenses, so we're not out any money. And basically, Encore served cities have a group of consultants that we utilize, and they're very effective in determining and analyzing the rates to ensure that they're something that should be passed through in the rates. So that's, you know, this, it's a 90-day suspension period, and so it really will be, it'll be resolved fairly quickly. It doesn't take long, so.
So would Willow Park work by itself, or would we work with other cities?
We'll work with other cities that are part of this Encore steering committee, yes, sir.
Okay. If we don't reach a resolution with Encore that is, yes, something that we can, we think is fair, what are our options after that?
Well, what will happen is, is that the leader be a resolution by settlement, or the next step would be we'd get a motion recommended to deny the rate increase. That rarely happens, because then we go right to the PUC, and it's, it's, at that point, it's kind of out of our hands. So, so the, the consultants will most likely work with them and will work towards a settlement. Again, everything goes up a little bit, so the rates are always some justification to them. It's just really looking at them and making sure that every bit of them need to be passed through.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution of the city of Willow Park suspending the June 17, 2022 effective date of Encore Electric Delivery Company's requested rate change to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates, approving cooperation with the steering committee of cities served by Encore to hire legal and consulting services, and to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation and appeals, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of resolution to the company and legal counsel for the steering committee.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to consider a three-year contractual commitment for lease and installation of Christmas lighting and decoration. Mr. Grimes?
Yes, Tony Fisher's been working on this with the mayor, and would you like to come up and do this presentation?
With Mayor Moss's recommendation, we, request, should I say, that we wanted to get some pricing for Christmas lighting, which was requested. So I got two companies, one of which I've worked with before for three years, and then another which I'm familiar with that I've got quotes on before. I've outlined everything in a worksheet for you, so you can see all the pricing. We've broken it all down, so that's what I've requested from the vendors, so that we can piece it however you want it as we decide.
So this is structured for installation, as I recall? I don't have it here in front of me, but it's structured as installation and the three-year?
The three-year lease? Yeah, the three-year lease is, is the best proposal.
Okay.
Put the initial groundwork for electrical, correct?
Pardon?
The initial groundwork for the electrical light?
The electrical is a one-time cost.
Yeah.
Yes, so the costs that you see on the worksheet are one-time costs.
Okay.
Question, would we own these lights and everything?
No, they're leased.
Leased, okay.
Yes, they're leased and stored at their facility. So they have, those are earmarked for us, so we'll receive the same lights, but they'll be put up, and then they're, they're taken down and stored for us for the year. The next year, they bring those lights out in the same, it's gonna be.
Would you mind quickly describing the scope of this project, what, what areas it seeks to cover?
It would be the perimeter lighting on City Hall. It would be unlit garland around the memorial. To light that, we could have lit garland if we put power to there. It would be an eight-foot, excuse me, a 20-foot Christmas tree. That was the 8,000 for that, but it's fully decorated and fully lit. That would be placed where we choose for that to be. All the lighting in the memorial park next door would be finished in all the trees, as well as the surrounding of the gazebo and garland around the gazebo. It would be cross timbers around the perimeter of the restroom. There would also be the public safety building around the perimeter of the roof line, and two of the trees over there. So the entire amount would be completely done.
Say again, what'd you say about the trees?
All the trees would be wrapped.
Oh, okay.
Would they start at Thanksgiving, after Halloween?
They'll put us, when we commit to a contract, they'll put us on the list as far as when they just install those, and it's typically the latter part of October they start doing that. So we have to be worked into, you know, the schedule for installation. And then they'll be taken down. They come out about every three days, and they check the lights, unless we have an issue prior to that, and then we call them, and they send a tech out to fix whatevers, if we have a string that's missing or out or something like that. But all of that is done, maintained by them. And then usually at the third, second to third week in January, they'll put them down and take them back and store them and wait till the next year. And we may change things, too, so, I mean, you can add, you can't take away, but you can add, so. And you can move.
Is transfer?
Yes.
So if we were to have a new City Hall, for example, we could...
Can you remind me, Brian or Tony, like, what has been done in previous years as far as what our Christmas decoration and decor looks like?
You want to answer that one, or you want me to?
Charlie Brown?
I don't believe we've ever had a Christmas tree, except for one in the lobby. The exterior lighting, I believe one year we went to Walmart and bought lights, and Public Works put it up, and half of them didn't work. And so I believe we had a citizen buy lights, maybe, for us, if that rings a bell. And so we put those up, and it's, they're hit or miss. Public Works comes in, has to do it, put them up. Sometimes they come down in January, sometimes it's February, sometimes it's March when they actually come down. We've never had a Christmas tree, we never had anything either close to what this would look like here at City Hall or any other building.
So question, would this, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, no, go ahead.
Would this not fall under the Parks Board purview and under their budget to manage and finance and request financing? Have they reviewed this, approved it, or anything?
I'm unaware of any Parks Board activity on this project.
They haven't been given this information yet.
They what, then?
They have not been given this information.
They have not? How much lead time does the vendor need to get us on the list for this year?
We'll have, we should be contracted in July.
We need to be contracted?
We should be contracted by mid-July in order to get on the list.
So if we do put this off to give the Parks Board a chance to review, does that cut it too close?
Parks Board doesn't meet until August. We might need it in three months, and so we met in May, but this wasn't fully together at that time.
Okay.
So they won't be needing that until August.
So from financing standpoint, how do we plan to...
So it's, you're looking at around $80,000 all in. We could do the groundwork for electricity in this fiscal year and get the ground, get power over to the park. I want to say that that probably has multiple purposes. For example, if we wanted to do something on Memorial Day, Fourth of July, other holidays.
Well, yeah, as I say, we probably ought to have power over there anyway.
You would have power over there, yes. So, you know, the $20,000, while it's part of the project, I think you get, you'll get some more distance out of that than just a singular event, unlike lighting. Then, in the next budget that we're currently working on, we can put $20,000 in there for the next three years to cover those costs. We would probably need to reevaluate some sponsorships, some of the things that we've done in the past. We may need to take a hard look and see if we want to continue some of those sponsorships or not.
So in the last budget offer, what we did for roads, part of that was assigned to parks, as I recall, right, a chunk of that?
Part of it, yeah, part of the road project was assigned to parks, yes.
So have they allocated or assigned those dollars yet?
I don't believe, I don't believe they have, no. No.
I mean, this looks like a good...
Not a firm number.
It seems like a good cause for something like that. Could we legally do that?
I think the bond covenant would not allow us to do a lease for lighting.
What about the electrical installation?
We could probably do the electrical installation for park construction. You could probably get by with the $20,000 for that. The lighting for the Christmas, the Christmas lighting themselves, I would have some serious reservations if that would meet the bond covenant.
Okay. Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I think that's something that we ought to look at is the permanent utility installation. Probably, I think that's a valid use of those funds for park, you know, since it is parks-related, right?
Yes, it is parks-related.
So, and then... All right. So would you need a motion?
We would need authorization from council to proceed. With any stipulations that you want to put on the motion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the staff to proceed with, let's see, to evaluate and proceed with a three-year contractual equipment for lease and installation of Christmas lighting and decorations, including evaluation of the utilities, electrical utilities using the pre-approved bond for the parks.
The existing bond funds?
The existing bond funds.
So we're talking about the installation of the underground electrical, not the contract itself, then? Is that correct?
What are we talking about for the power to the park?
The power would just be through the electricians. So that's separate, that's separate from the lighting function.
Well, we're talking about using different funding for that.
Yes.
It's not like using electrical.
We don't know that we can do that yet.
If I understand the bond, if I understand what Greg's motion is, to the greatest extent possible, use the existing bond funds. We have some money set aside for parks, for park improvements, to power up what we're calling Memorial Park, which is next door.
Right.
And that price is estimated at $20,000 as it currently stands. So your motion would be to take $20,000 out of the bond funds to...
Right, because without power, the agreement is kind of meaningless.
Presuming bond council would, would Kristen give me an opinion on that, Pat?
I think she would.
Okay. So assuming bond council deems that an acceptable use of funds, your motion would be to take $20,000 from the four-point whatever that we just passed a year ago or so, or six months ago? Was it five? No? Was it 5.7?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought that was streets. So we do the 5.7, take $20,000 out of it to power up Memorial Park, and then to execute a contract with...
Christmas lights here?
Yes.
Right, which would be next year's budget, then?
For the next three years, yeah, it'd be next year's budget.
Right.
So we start this December?
Yeah. Yeah.
Because I assume the power would have to be done, you know, August, September, prior to the end of this fiscal year, right?
We'll have to have it installed by October.
Right.
Yeah.
And that includes, we have to get new power. We have to get a new power line to the park. We don't have any there at all, so we'd have to get Encore working on that, too, to get that.
Do we have an electrical plan for that? I mean, do we, are we just going to run, we're not running extension cords out there and saying, here we go?
No. So, yeah, there's, there'll be a gang box. And so we've got some ideas as to where those are going to go, one near the gazebo, one on the other side. So just some different locations where we can put kind of the gang boxes, where we can have outlets to plug into, and then you run the extension cords from there and they plug one into the other. So just trying to make sure they don't go across the sidewalks.
All right. I'm not trying to sound like a Scrooge, but I'd like to know where all these boxes are going. I mean, I'd really like to see it laid out somewhere. I like the idea. I don't know if I can jump on board.
For the electrical?
Yeah.
For the electrical. I can get that.
I mean, I think the electricals, you can use it year-round for different reasons.
We still have a motion on the table.
Sorry.
No, but I say that obviously the electrical is something that's very practical and has other applications well beyond just our Christmas decorations. Is this something, though, that could be kind of piecemealed out? Like we have, we do City Hall this year, and then next year we add Memorial Park. The next year, Cross Timbers Park, something that can be built onto as we see results. Because I, you know, this is a big, a big bite to take all at once without ever having seen it done before. I would like to see, you know, you do a good job with City Hall, absolutely assign you this year Memorial Park as well. Those two look great. You can have public safety building and cross timbers, and expand that once we see, one, the quality of the product, the scope of what our money is getting as well. Because like I said, this is just, this is a big bite to take, especially with...
And that's definitely the beauty of this company, is we can start small. So you can start with maybe the Christmas tree. So a 20-foot Christmas tree that's fully decorated, fully lit, put it in the park. We'll have to do the power anyway.
Right.
Do the lights around the perimeter of City Hall, and we do the garland out front. Next year, continue, so we can, however you want to do it, that's why it's...
I do want to get, Mike and Carrie, I want to get y'all's opinion. It's your building. Is that, if we put exterior lights around there, is that going to mess with your operations?
No.
Okay.
Fire department usually hangs Christmas lights anyway. Yeah. They have a ladder truck.
They have a ladder. For some reason, I have, I see Mike being Clark Griswold.
That's right.
Just checking every bulb.
How tall is that ladder, Mike? Might have the biggest tree in town.
So do we want to piecemeal it, or do we want to do the full thing? Y'all want to do City Hall and a Christmas tree?
I could tell you you wouldn't be disappointed. So I've used the company three years, and they do an amazing job.
I've seen the work. They do great work. And I don't think that's a question, but I would like to see or explore, you know, sponsorships or something, too. I think that'd be great. For, if we want to add on three-year sponsorship or something of that nature. Dealerships, whatever.
But we need, but tonight or sometime in the next thirty days, we need to tell them what we want, so we can go into contract, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We got to have power before we do anything.
Yeah, I agree.
Which I'll probably need to get started sooner than that, because we're dealing with Encore, so I don't know whether, what the lead time is to get new, I do drop there.
Okay. So was this council's pleasure?
I got a motion.
You got a motion?
Which I put out for, for the three-year contractual commitment and for using bond funds from the road project to fund the electrical installation as part of the parks' allocated budget from that bond fund.
For all, for all components presented tonight?
For all, yeah, all the one-time costs.
Yeah. So you were, just to be clear, we're talking City Hall, Memorial Park, Cross Timbers Park, public safety building?
All of them.
Okay.
Brian, to Sean's point about some private funding as well, if there's anything out there available from the public, how do we include that in this?
I think...
Do we explore that after we get this moving?
Yeah, I think you would have to, you would, you're not going to get sponsorships in the next thirty days. I'd be surprised if you did. I think you put it out there, and then you try to get sponsorships. I'll say this, the mayor's been able to get sponsorships for things that I didn't think was possible. So I'm never going to doubt Mayor Moss's ability to get things through. I wouldn't, I'm not going to count on it by any stretch of the imagination, but I wouldn't. I'm not going to, I'm not going to bet against him.
I'll second Councilman Runnbaum's motion.
So before I ask for vote, I want to make clear, if approved, I don't want to put my yes to $80,000 yet, based on everything I heard, I've heard tonight. So what does this...
So my motion would cover the one-time cost for all areas that need the utilities upgrade and the three-year agreement, so we can get started on, get lined up and in the queue for this coming holiday season, right?
So that would be the $4,000?
For all, for all facilities.
For all facilities?
Mm-hmm.
So the one...
All locations.
The one-time cost is the $2,300 and the $5,800. So we're looking about $10,000, is that right?
About $20 for the electrician.
$20 for the electrician, okay.
And that'd be, that'd be $19, $19.7.
Okay.
Whatever it is for the lighting.
Okay, got it.
$19.4, I'm sorry, $19.490 for lighting. And as will be year two, as will be year three. So that amount will stay unchanged if we did the whole, the whole amount.
Okay.
So the difference in the year one was the electrical.
Okay, I'm with you now. Okay.
So I think, I think we put this up for a vote. If either it passes, it passes. If it fails, then we go back to reconsidering what we already.
So just so I'm clear, voting yes tonight says $19,400 a year, $4.90 a year for decorating, for public safety building, Cross Timbers Park, Memorial Park, and City Hall.
Yes.
For, over the course of the next three years.
And the Christmas tree.
And the Christmas, yeah, the Christmas tree. And then we're taking the additional $20,000, hopefully...
Out of the bond.
Out of the bond. For obviously needed...
Improvements.
Improvements in utilities to locations that need them.
I'd like to clarify something. Each year, we can decide whether to fund during the budget process, correct?
I'm sorry?
Each year, we can decide whether to fund it during the budget process. In other words, multi-year agreements usually gives the council an opportunity to get out if they want at each budget cycle.
I would have you review the contract before we sign it.
Yeah, well, there's no contract, there's just a proposal itself. That's usually the process, so that way...
So if we want to get out, if we didn't like what we did this year, we can get out next year? Okay.
No, if you look at ten being, you have a 40% of the remaining balance penalty.
Yeah. So you're...
Okay, so...
Before we're ready to get out of it.
Just so I'm clear, to pro, mayor pro tem tem crumble, is if we cannot get the $20,000 allocated from a bond for the utilities,
Yes.
we can scrap the, we can scrap this, and then we'll bring them back up to see what...
I think, I think, I think we would need clarification from you guys if y'all wanted us to, if y'all authorized the power of the park, we can either do that through, I can do it through budget this year, through excess revenues, or we can use bond funds.
If we can't do bond, that's what, that's my question.
Yeah, we can use, we can use excess revenues. But if we, reserves.
You just need approval by the council.
Yes.
Put the motion on the tables for the whole kit and caboodle.
Yes.
And I wouldn't agree to those penalties they have in there. That's, there's no reason for that. I mean, we're paying each year, I mean, we're putting in the fixed cost ourselves, separate and apart from the agreement, and you're paying them one-third the first year. So if we get out the second year, I mean, they're not out anything. That's an equal three years, so I wouldn't agree to that.
And the alternative is they do have one-year leasing as well, so you can...
Well, they got to understand cities have the right each year to get out. That's, that's what makes it. I mean, we have the ability and the obligation to be able to get out each funding cycle. So you can tell them that.
So would we try to look to change this to a one-year lease? Do the prices change?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. How much? Instead of roughly $19,000, what does it get to?
You doing the math over there, Tony? Okay.
If I had to guess, I would say probably maybe $5,000 more, if the tree is the case. Tree is $1,500 more, so we're talking about maybe $5,000.
Tony, each year, they come and put the lights up and take them down, correct? So each, we have the ability, it'll be before October 1. If we terminate it before October 1 of each year, I mean, they haven't done anything for that, that year. So I don't understand how they, why would, why would we... So I don't understand how they, why would, why would we pay them a penalty for that, that doesn't make any sense.
I know like the lighting, they cut everything to fit specifically what you have. So I guess, I mean, they're out that, I don't know if it's something they can reuse or not, I'm sure it is, but. So do we have a motion? Still on the table?
You have a motion on the table.
Now, how do you modify the, just see if we can work out terms and conditions?
Yeah, what contingencies can be placed into this to make it?
Well, I mean, we don't, we have to approve it tonight?
So I think, if you take, take this in two pieces. If you look at power to the park, if we can all agree on that, then we will, you need to authorize power to the park. We need to have an answer to the lighting company probably in the next 30 days. As to, do we want to do a one-year, two-year, what are we going to do, all-in-all things of that nature? If you don't do power to the park, none of this stuff matters anyway, right? I mean, if there's nothing out there, there's nothing out there. So if you want to take in that, in that respect.
So do I need to withdraw my motion and redo it, or how does that work? What, what do I need to do?
It depends on what council wants to do.
No, I mean, if we want, if I want to restate my motion.
How do we do that, Pat?
You could just say, we move to approve of staff hiring contractor ring power to the park. And authorize staff to negotiate on the terms and conditions and bring it back at the next meeting on the lighting proposal.
For approval of the actual contract, your contract?
Yes.
Okay, what do you say?
But the, the 20,000 of bond money, right?
Right. Prior, priority would be out of bond money secondary. If that's not available, then we look at general, or whatever.
Reserve fund.
Reserve funds.
So if I. If I got a bingo card or a scorecard. So if I'm clear on what, I'm just trying to get what y'all, y'all drew, it's standing there. Power to the park.
Right.
And then bring this back up at a future council meeting?
It'll have to be next month.
For further discussion?
If we can, if we want to carry forward this question.
Yes, it's that item 10 is the, the canceling of the lease.
Yeah.
That's the troubling issue.
So it'd be 40% of the total lease agreement. So year one.
60,000 bucks, it's.
Well, if you, if you're going to go all in on year one, right? So then it drops to 60 grand. 40% of 60 grand is what, 12,000 bucks? No?
What, what are we?
No, you're right, you're right, 24,000.
Why don't we, why don't we make one more modification? So we'll split this into two pieces.
Here we go.
One-time costs. So one-time cost of 20,000 to be pulled from the park bond fund prior, preferably. But reserve funds if that, that's not possible or legal.
Sure.
So that's the first part of the.
Motion.
Motion. And I'd like to just separate that, so let's just vote on that first. And I'll withdraw the second part, we'll discuss that in a second.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so second, withdrawal, and then 20,000 from the park bond money, road money.
Right.
But that is our only source where it would come from.
Backup is the.
Reserve fund.
Reserve fund.
Okay.
We will get done one way or the other.
Okay. With you.
You good, you okay with that?
I know where I'm going with it, but, but I understand it now.
Okay. Okay.
All right, I have a, a motion in a second for the first piece of this.
For the one-time cost.
For the one-time cost. All in favor?
Okay. Three, one?
Part two.
Against. And just to clarify, I just wanted to come out of that park's money, so that's, that's where I'm at.
Okay.
I'm all for it, I just, it's got to come in there.
I understand.
So for the second part of this, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to negotiate the agreement to be satisfactory with the city. With the intent of a three-year agreement, if it come back by the next council meeting with. Where do we want to verb this? Am I on the right track there? To see if we have an agreeable terms. And we can vote on it at that point, whether or not to go one-year or three-year, or at all.
Would you also include a, a piecemeal?
That's it?
Sure, I would like to.
Whatever.
I, my perspective, I do not want the full thing in year one. I don't want that number. I want to see, we've had basically zero for, as long as I can remember. Let's start somewhere lower than here, take everything that, every park, every rec, every city hall. And put an ornament on it, light it up. That's not where I want to start. I would like to see this on a much smaller scale. So if we can do this piecemealed, I would, uh, be more inclined to vote on that.
Greg, you adding the piecemeal part?
We'll add the piecemeal part.
All right. I like that. I'll second that.
All right, we have. Write that down, I'll be surprised.
You got that candy?
The recording has it. We'll get it straight.
I can see Crystal right now going, what did y'all?
We have a unique motion and a second. All in favor?
Vote yes for the unique motion.
All right. Thank you.
Wow, my notes on this thing. Greatness, Tony. Tony, I lied to you when I told you this would be really simple.
All right, next item, to consider extending wastewater services within city limits. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Counsel.
Pro Tim Tim.
Say Tim Tim.
Yeah, semi-pro.
Okay. So the, the request was to bring forth some discussion about serving the north side of the, the city with sewer. I guess this would generally be north of the Meadow Place. Town center type area in north that currently has no sewer service on septic. And so this would be serving substantially existing residences, which is, offers some unique challenges for, for running sewer facilities. And so I'm going to kind of start with what those are and then, then I'll kind of move forward with, with the discussion about the different areas. But the, the challenges are, and really the big one is, you're, you're providing service to existing residences that currently use septic. And so you've got to get a, a sewer lateral line from the main, which in this case would run down the, the street side of the, the residence. And get it to wherever the sewer coming out of the house currently is, which is generally in the back. So you're running through somebody's yard, you're running through landscape areas, you're running by their tool shed, all those types of things. So that gets, that gets really involved and tricky and expensive. And so that's really, of all the things that, that you kind of have to deal with, that's probably the biggest factor that affects the feasibility of it. The other thing in this case that, that I would consider a pretty significant challenge would be the, the additional discharge that you would be generating. So in the, in the CIP currently, and it has been for the, the past CIPs. This, this project or this, this scenario has been shown to be toward the end of the planning period, the overall planning period. I'm talking 2050 timeframe. Because these things are generally hard to fund and because, because of the cost. But so, and I only say that because the impact on the discharge out of a wastewater plant would be moved up. But under this, you know, the circumstances of getting this done sooner rather than later. And there's a, there's different ways that could be, that could impact it and different ways we could deal with it. But that's something that also has to be dealt with. Couple of other less significant or tangible aspects. So we are dealing with existing neighborhoods and, and kind of congested areas in some cases. Traffic control would be an issue. Since there are no facilities there already, land acquisition would be an issue as well. If you look at the way this lays out, I mean, you can go ahead and go right there. So the way I kind of looked at this, and this, this may not be comprehensive for the entire city. But I think the areas that, that were being, that kind of brought this up were the, the areas north of Ranch House. In the, the, kind of the Indian camp area. And then all the undeveloped areas in the, in the city limits and the ETJ, kind of to the east of that. And then everything south of there along Squaw, along the Squaw Creek corridor. That's kind of what I thought, that, that's what I understood kind of the emphasis was. There are some other areas that could probably be investigated or should be. But these two areas are the bulk of it. And, and I think to begin the discussion, they'll give us enough information to do that. And so the, the area north of Ranch House, I'll start with that. I looked at, you know, there's some number of existing residences, obviously, that would be served. But whatever you would build out, you'd want to build out to encompass whatever was needed for the overall area. So I looked at the land use plan to develop an estimated number of connections that, that those facilities would need to be built for. Mainly the main lines and, and if there's any kind of treatment or lift stations and that kind of thing would need to be built for, for future expansion. Anyway, the, the estimated number of connections I came up with was 1,000. And that's probably in the neighborhood of three times what's currently there, maybe, maybe half. But it's, it's significantly more than the number of connections you would be putting in place if you ran sewer there right now. And so that, that equates, based on the, the typical use you see, to about 300,000 gallons per day of additional wastewater treatment. How you accomplish that is, you know, there's, there's a number of ways you could do it. The plant that we're designing right now would certainly have the ability just in, in land area. And, and maybe even facilities, initial facilities to treat that. But you've got to consider the other areas on the south side that are going to be coming in and adding flow to that treatment plant also. So, and the other issue I have, the concern I have with the treatment aspect of it is even though, you know, we're, we're building this plant out for, for about twice what you currently see, a little over twice what you currently see in, in flow. And, and our, you know, our, our intent is to, to build it in such a way that you can come in and build even, and, and double that. The problem you have is, or may have, and I don't know, you know, it's hard to predict what's going to happen in the future. But permitting flows on that side of town and below to the south is probably going to be problematic. Because the TCEQ is getting very, uh, difficult to, to deal with in that respect. That's not the best way to phrase it.
You talking about the discharge?
The discharge. And so that's one reason why we're, our current discharge is being planned for, for the reservoir in Squaw Creek. Because discharging in that location has become such an issue that we had to move it. And so if we increase that discharge further by the, by the amount we're looking at here, I think we're probably looking at moving even further north. The further north you go, the more buffer you have before it hits the lower part of the stream. And so I don't want to go into great bit, bit of detail about that. I just want to give you kind of my, the reasoning behind why I'm going to show you what I'm about to show you. But, but however you do it, there's a cost involved. Whether you, whether you pipe it or pump it to the, the current location. Or you, you treat it down there and turn around and pump it up and discharge it in a further north location, or you build another plant. There's a, there's an expense involved in all that. Also for that, for serving that area, and let me go back to that map. If you look at this, you can, you see the red lines, kind of the darker lines that basically are on the streets. Those are the areas, that's basically running lines in all of the current existing, uh, developed areas where you have residences. And you'll see kind of down to the, the bottom middle of that page where the square is, it's, it's hard for me to read, you guys may be able to read it. But it, that's where I've identified a possible location of another wastewater treatment plant. You'd also almost certainly need at least a couple of lift stations to get to every area to get it up to, to where it needs to go to get it, wherever the ultimate location is. And about 30, and what you see there represents about 36,000 linear feet of, of sewer line. And that's to serve existing customers, the 36,000 feet and the lift stations. And so, and then you have the service laterals that we discussed, tie-ins, manholes, other things, soft costs and all that kind of thing. So based on all of that, my estimate, preliminary estimate for that would be about $19 million. And that's to provide service just to the areas north of Ranch House Road without any, any infrastructure in between the current plant location and there. Again, if you were to, if you were to scrap the plant idea and go with pumping or piping it somewhere, you would have additional cost involved in that. That would probably work out similarly a little more, maybe a little less, but it would be comparable in cost. So it's not going to impact that cost estimate significantly. Go ahead and, and move on to the south part, south of Ranch House, which again, basically for what I considered was along the Squaw Creek corridor and serving all of the residences in the Yucca and Old Ford area. And then south on the Kings Gate and Rollview and all that area. And then, and then on the east side of Squaw Creek. And so you'd substantially be talking about serving only existing residences there. There's not a lot of new development that's going to happen in that area. It's pretty well built out. And I estimated about 300 connections for that area. That's, that represents about 90,000 gallons per day of treatment capacity. That is, that amount is something that the current, the, the plant that's under the design could handle easily without any modification. And so, and, and it, you know, running down that Squaw Creek corridor with a main line puts you almost right to the point where you're, you're into the Kings Gate lift station where you're feeding the new plant. So, so this is a lot more feasible from that standpoint, as far as treatment and, and the costs associated with that. To get the service, again, you probably would need a couple of lift stations, maybe more, but most likely at least two. And about 30,000 feet of sewer line. And again, that's, that's sewer line to service existing connections. And then the service laterals and ties, et cetera. So the cost on that was about 9.2 million. So you can see that the cost of that line work is a pretty significant part of the cost. It, you know, you're going into existing streets, you've got pavement repair, you've got those types of things, as well as the laterals that we discussed going back through these residences. But, but that's the cost we came up with for that. And that just kind of represents, again, I'm, I'm just drawing lines around the streets. I, I went to every lot, every current lot within that area, and that's what we, that's what I used to come up with the estimate. And then a line all the way down Kings Gate to the current Kings Gate lift station to get it to a point where you can get it to the treatment location.
So question, so those households are all on septic. What, what's the projected? What's TCEQ's view of having all these septic systems inside of a city limits over the next 10, 15, 20 years? Are they going to make it harder, more expensive for homeowners to replace those? And what's going to happen?
I think you're going to see that. I, I think it's, it may come from, it may come from somewhere downhill of the TCEQ. You've already seen that with the groundwater district and, and other agencies in the area. But, but yes, I, you know, I don't think the TC, TCEQ is going to have any drastic change in regulations over the next 10 years. There's nothing on the horizon for that. But they definitely would like to see that happen. And, and so there may be funding available for that. You know, it's, it, there's nothing that I know about there currently, aside from loan funds, that, that you could tap for that. But there, but there may be in the future, in the near future. I think in this situation, phasing is probably what you're looking at. I think all or some portion of the, of the Squaw Creek part gets you started. Then you move up, maybe, maybe you split that in half and then get the next part using some, some subsidized funding, whatever that turns out to be. And, and, you know, continue to explore that every year because you can put in your name in the hat every year, just like we've done for other projects. And, and try to get the best funding out there for that. And then, and then just move north. But I think, taking it all in one bite is, is probably, as you can see, is, is a pretty, you know, daunting thing. But, but I certainly think you could, you could phase it and the income off of that additional sewer service could help pay for that as you go in stages. And that, that's how I would see it.
So with the growth of forward this direction. So, with the growth of forward this direction, you know, it looks like there, everything north of our, and east of our ETJ is going to be growing significantly, so, you know, we, there's some opportunities for development there to increase revenue from, you know, from that. So, is there a way to, I guess, put what we call a home run line up into that area, you know, to just extend it for new development that would make that available for sewer? Makes sense?
You certainly could, I mean, you know, I, I don't know, I, I could throw a rough number at you, I could say maybe half of that estimate would be just a main line to go up there. So if you were going to get all the way up to the north, you know, say, oh, the Ranch House, uh...
Say up all the way up to White Sutherland Road, or?
Okay, well, yeah, I'll say that, then, then you're probably in the 10 million to 12 million. I'm throwing a number out at you, but that's, you know, you're, you're probably in that ballpark, from, from what I've...
If you're talking new development, though, you would probably, let's say somebody wants to come in and do a 300-home development up north, we could, you know, obviously require them to tie into the sewer system, and they would put the infrastructure in, and then...
Yeah, I think the, I think the phasing plan where you, maybe you get it, you start at that direction, and then you get a big developer up north, if they have to go all the way down to your, your plant...
That's probably it.
It's going to kill the development, but if they, but if, but if you're kind of working, if you're meeting in the middle, there's some opportunity.
Right, meeting in the middle, yeah.
But I definitely, regardless, I think the development should cover a lot of that cost, and it's not through direct cost, at least through impact.
So, my thought is, is that we need to get some data from existing homeowners, as far as their interest in connecting to a sewer system. Is it possible to have staff put together a survey, by going to the, the water bills each month for over a two or three-month period, to say, what's the interest, would they, if it was available, would they connect, and what's, how do we do that?
I think, let me get back to you, because I, I want to be able to make sure we're getting accurate information, that we don't have, I mean, the water bill makes the most sense. Some of the people who are on septic do not have water, they get garbage, so they, you know, they may do that as well, just kind of talking out loud here. I don't like Survey Monkey, because anybody can get in on it.
Right.
Let me put some thought to that, because short of sending, you know, Michelle's guys door-to-door and saying, hey, fill this out, mail it back to City Hall, I don't know how you, how you'd get a good response to that.
All right, let's come up with some ideas, and we'll talk about it.
Give me, yeah, let me think about how to, because the part of, the compelling factor is, we don't have the ability to require them to get on.
Right.
So I think...
It's all laundry, yeah.
Just generic encounters going to be, hey, yeah, I'm interested in what sewer is, I've got a 30-year-old sewer plant, or, or septic system, or whatever. And so, yeah, I'd like to, I'd give me more information. First question will be, how much does it want to cost?
Right.
And I can tell you what our sewer rate is right now, but that may not be the rate to them, to get the cost of the infrastructure over there. And so, and we do have some challenges financially in the sewer system right now, because you're paying for a, we are paying for a $14 million plant that's not online, and you have, it's a catch-22. Roughly 50% of our water customers have sewer service, wastewater service. Eight hundred, about eight, 892, I think it was the number this morning.
Eight oh two.
Eight oh two, okay. And we have 2,200 water accounts?
Yeah.
So, you're, the wastewater system's behind the eight ball in terms of generating the revenues to pay for debt. It's also behind the eight ball in capacity, but, but the biggest obstacle is overcoming that, what, 12, $1400, 1400 account deficit to, to generate the revenues that the water system would generate. So it's, it's a, do you put it in and hope they come, or do they demand that they're going to come, but the price is too much? So there's a, you know, there's going to be some, some play there.
Yeah, well, I think the first step is we just need to collect some information and stay on top of what the state is going to obligate us to do, or what funds might be available to support this, financing, or whatever they may come up with.
I, I think T C Q, maybe even EPA at some point is probably going to chime in and say, we really don't want these, these septic tanks in, in the middle of a residential area.
I mean, yeah, they've said that.
I mean...
Whether they put some teeth to it...
Yeah, the minute they put teeth to it is, is...
But if they do, they're probably going to be funding...
Yes.
...attached to it, and when that happens, you might have some, some options to tap there.
Yep.
So, here's a question. How would a home transition from septic to sewer, and what would they do with their septic system?
Well, the first part of your question, I mean, it's, it's really simple, I mean, you just, you got to run a line to wherever it goes through their yard, to wherever their current line coming out of their house is, and tie into the cleanout. I mean, it's, you know, on the surface, it's pretty easy, it's just logistics of getting it done, but as far as the septic tank, they would have to abandon it, and there's rules that apply to how that can be done. You know, they'd most likely abandon it in place, but they could remove it.
Fill it with sand or something like that?
Yeah. You know, they, you have to collapse a portion of it and fill it with sand, if, if you follow the guidelines that they put out, so.
How, if any, would this affect existing sewer customers as far as cost? Say, we do it, and only half of 300 decide to sign up, is this, what kind of...
Well, ultimately, the system, i.e. the current customers, would be responsible for whatever debt you issue, so you couldn't, you couldn't just pigeonhole it to a certain, certain number. I'm spitballing here, and I've got three of the best minds that knows the answer to this better than I do. You'd probably have to chart, you could chart some impact fees to individual customers to get connected to the system, in addition to lines and everything else, so there will be some upfront costs for that. You'd want to offset that as much as you can. If you're living in Hunter's Glen or Meadows Place Estates, you know, and we, we bite off a $9.2 million piece of the pie, we want to be able to make sure that everybody can pay for that. I don't think Ms. Hannah would like to see her sewer rates tripled or doubled or whatever, on the off chance that...
No, I'm not pushing them.
Don't do that, Michelle, Michelle, beg you not to do that.
Oh, go ahead.
But I, I think you want to try to find a way to make it as equitable as possible.
But I, I think we got to look down the road several, you know, even, you know, start looking in terms of decades, because as those residents, you know, depending on what requirements are imposed, plus, you know, you look at those homes down the road several years, and as they change ownership and get remodeled, and is the value going to hold if there's a septic there, and what is the cost going to be? Right now, it's what, 15,000 to 20,000 to replace a septic, as I understand?
I think that's probably...
Yeah.
...in the ballpark.
Yeah, it could be doubling that in the next 15 years, you know, so...
I, I think the fear is, though, your impact fees for those, that home would probably be, you'll be close to that, I mean, it's not going to be that number, but it'll be, it'd probably be 7,500, 10,000 for, depending on what the project is and how much, so...
But by that point, then, you know, the price of a septic may have gone up significantly too.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. I think it's worth looking at, I think your point is, is right. Let's get better data, better information, get back to you guys. There may be a need, we may, 9% of them may say, hey, we want to. Just know this, we have, unless I'm mistaken, Pat, we have no way of compelling them to get onto our, our, our system.
Yeah, not if they're grandfathered in.
Yeah, that's...
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thing I didn't do that I can do is make some projections on, if you, if you get 300 signed up or, or put on, what that revenue would look like, and what the impact would have to look like.
Hundred and eighty thousand.
There you go.
Your debt service on 9.2 million is not 180,000. Your, your revenue would be, at, at our current rate, roughly 180, and debt on, debt on 15 million is 400,000, so nine, so you're looking at probably 300, 250, 300,000 for an additional, for initial 9.2.
So, 300 connections you're looking at.
Yeah, and that's at one point, that's at 1.25% interest.
So, the, the other thing that ties into this is our debt service starting to drop off significantly in what, five years?
Well, that's for general fund, for, for the wastewater, we're just, that party's just getting started.
That's true.
So, so this is a discussion-action table, or waiting for...
You, you got, are you instruct staff to get better data, to get data on, on...
Data, data, data.
Some sort of survey?
Okay.
Yeah, some, some survey ideas, how do we, how do we get an understanding of...
What the actual need is?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else needed on that?
No.
All right. Next item on the agenda, to consider water line replacement and street improvements to Squaw Creek. Once again, Mr. Turner.
Okay.
Just to be clear, this is Squaw Creek Road, not the, not the residence.
Right.
Or the golf course.
Yeah, so, I think, again, there was a, a request, have some discussion about Squaw Creek Road and, and potential improvements, and the, the recent street assessment that was done, Squaw Creek was kind of separated as its own entity, and, and I think this is really just to kind of discuss why that would be. Squaw Creek has some unique, unique aspects of it that most of the other streets in town do not have, especially the, the streets with the, the, an arterial street like, like Squaw Creek, so. We're talking about the full, I can't think and talk.
Is it, is it dead?
Can you hear me then?
Yes, there you go.
I think I got it, but, we'll see. So obviously, from Ranch House down to San Bass, just a depiction of what we're looking at there. So, again, kind of like the sewer, that there's some unique aspects of Squaw Creek that impact the constructibility and the cost of it to reconstruct it, and so, going to kind of go through what those are. Street construction, specifically the street construction itself, drainage, utilities, all have kind of a, a different impact on Squaw Creek than, than might on some others. And there's a couple of reasons for that across the board, but specifically rated, related to the street construction, the Squaw Creek has several significant grade changes, and they're, they're steep, and they're, and they're tall, and they're many and, and not far between. So, when you talk about street reconstruction or street design, you have to take into account some safety limitations that related to driving side distance, and, and that has everything to do with the grade of the street, or, or more specifically, the rate of change of the grade of the street. So when you're going up and back down in, in short intervals, you lose that side distance, and so what sometimes you have to do in order to meet the current safety limitation is attenuate or stretch those, those areas out and flatten them so that, so that they're not as steep and the grades are not as, as pronounced, in order to achieve that side distance. And so, that results in having to either cut or raise the street in different locations as you go down the street, and so you've got additional fill or additional cut. And that in turn requires additional use of the right-of-way, which kind of leads into the other aspect for Squaw Creek, which is that the right-of-way in several locations is, is limited, at least the space we have to work is limited, without a bunch of other work to get it to where we can use it. Do you know, there's, we're going down into creeks, and, and there's steep slopes in some places, so there's some significant change that would have to take place in order to accommodate the street that we would be looking at. And, you know, Squaw Creek is a minor arterial street, which is one of the major classifications, you know, it carries a lot of traffic, so, so that kind of amplifies the problem because you have to have enough width to carry that minor arterial and still have the, the area within the right-of-way to do other things that, that relate to that. And one of those would be drainage, and again, the, the grade changes and the grades themselves on Squaw Creek have a big impact on the drainage and, and the, and what you would have to do to accommodate that in the design of the street. I think there's at least four, there may be five low-water crossings on Squaw Creek, and so you've got major culverts that would require replacement and upgrade at those locations, and so there's costs associated with that. Again, the right-of-way is limited in narrow places, and so, because of that, it may require some subsurface storm drainage to carry the water from one place to the other and down to these low-water crossing locations. And also, the drainage impacts are, are more than they would be on other streets in town that are flatter because mainly of erosion, and so, when you have these steeper grades, you've got runoff at higher velocities, which tend to erode faster, undermine the road, so that, that requires consideration in most likely concrete, flat work or additional concrete work, so. And then, the other aspect for Squaw Creek, which, which you run into on every street really, but in this case, because of the other constraints we have, it's kind of amplified again, and, and that would be the utilities. There are existing water lines that run under Squaw Creek, a good portion of it, I believe, is under the pavement, some of it is not, but a large portion of it is, and that line's deteriorated, deteriorated. It's been identified in the capital improvement plan as one of the lines that needs to be replaced. In fact, it's one of the higher priority lines that needs to be replaced. And so, those lines would be required to go under the pavement in some locations. And then, the future sewer lines, if we did provide service up that way, or if you, even if you anticipated providing service up that way, that would be the corridor that you would have a main line going, really out of necessity, there's not a lot of other option there, so. And the sewer line would, would definitely require a good portion of it under the pavement because sewer lines, you can't turn like water, so there would be significant portions of that under the street. And at a minimum, on the water and the sewer, you would have service crossings that would have to be addressed, and a lot of them. So there would be, there would be utility work that would have to take place under this pavement. And so, it raises the question that always comes up, is do you, do you come in and repave the street, and then turn around and come back later and tear it up to put in water in sewer lines? Well, of course, the answer is no. You do that either before or during the street paving process, and so, and so that cost has to be considered as well. I'm flipping through my sheets, that's the... And so, on the cost, the street improvements, I assume concrete paving because for you guys, that's, that's been your policy for arterial streets, is to put them in concrete, although the costs are, the, the difference in cost is not great for the, for the purposes of this discussion, but I did include concrete paving. The box culvert replacements, the, the storm drainage and all of that, and, and figured it, an estimated cost of $6 million. That will be in the C I P, if you look at the last C I P, that's considerably more, and I, I'm kind of bringing up a side note here, but, but prices have increased a lot, and so, these prices are going to be a little higher than what we've seen for Squaw Creek in the past, but, but about $6 million just on the pavement portion of it. And then, on the utilities, if you come in and, and do the water line replacement, if you lay a sewer trunk line, and you do that, and I'm estimating this as if you do that as part of the street construction, in other words, there's no pavement repair, there's no, you're saving those things, those items by doing it while the street's torn up, and so that cost was 2.75 million. And so, the, as you look at the C I P, if you look at the major projects that we've got planned for the first phase of the, the street C I P on this bond, that's, that's less than this cost, and so that's why Squaw Creek is, is separated as a different item in that plan.
So, a few questions, so, as a matter of your arterial, arterial street, where is the bulk of the traffic coming from? Is it from that neighborhood right there, is it coming from off of Ranch House, from further north?
You know, we'd, we'd have to do a traffic study to really pinpoint that, but it's almost certainly coming from the, the local neighborhoods.
Yes.
You know, you get passed through, but it's, but you've got a lot of homes in that area, and most of that is almost certainly from there.
So, so we're rebuilding Kings Gate up to that point, we're rebuilding Crown on the backside of it, is, are there any other route options to bring that traffic out and take it off of Kings Gate, I mean, off of Squaw Creek?
Well, and I meant to, I meant to hit that item, that item in the discussion, I think I glossed over it, but, and it had more to do with traffic control, but if you look at the northern half of, of the Squaw Creek kind of corridor, all of the, that's Old Ford and all the way down to Yucca, the only egress for those neighborhoods is Squaw Creek. They have no other... They, they have no other egress, and there's really no way to, to create one.
Uh-huh.
You might go back to Crown Road, but, but you'd have to cut through some property. There's a pretty significant amount of work that would have to be done to get that to happen.
Yeah.
The, in the southern portion, you've got King's Gate. That's the only other egress there. And so, and it's, you know, it's, it's taking you through a couple of turns to get to that point, but, and, and then you go off the bluff, so you really don't have a lot of option there either. So, other than, other than King's Gate being the, the alternative for that section. That answer your question?
Because King's Gate's going to come up. Pull that map up, if you don't mind, Derek.
Sorry.
You would have to almost go through some, some kind of condemnation. King's Gate is that next street to the left of the red line, which is Squaw Creek, and where it turns at Sherwood, you could, you could, you'd have to go through condemnation and require some property, and ma, basically do a forty-five right there to connect to Squaw Creek.
Mm-hmm.
That would be a point of egress. I know that Jim Martin's talked about doing some developments over here, just off, off the page of where the.
Where the green.
Yeah. Just above the green, I think, a little bit.
Yeah.
I know they, that maybe there can be some, some options for egress over there, although I don't know.
I think there actually will be one there, but it's a, but it'll be a local, it'll be a residential street.
Residential street.
It's not going to be an arterial.
Yeah. Yeah. So Squaw Creek's got its own, it's, it's, it's a problem, and it's going to be something that we have to solve. Water lines are, what kind of water line is underneath there, if you can tell me?
Electrical PVC.
Electrical PVC. Was it used when we acquired it?
Probably.
Probably.
So you have electrical PVC underneath there. I personally saw them work a leak last Christmas, or New Year's Eve, or whatever.
New Year's Eve.
There's always water leaks on that line, because it's electrical PVC. The, the rub is this, and we've heard the presentation from Derek, so here's the rub that we've got as staff. We know we need to replace that water line. That's pretty much a no-brainer. But to replace that water line's going to necessitate street repair. And so, it's not as if you could, you replace the water line, and then we wait five years, and then you do street repair on it. You're going to have to.
Bite it all off at one day.
Yes, we're going to have to be, once you, once you jump out of the plane, you're, you're committed.
I had a question.
Sure.
Utility improvement, two point seven five million.
Yes.
We have roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand in ARPA funds that I had designated out for.
Yes.
Water repair. Can we designate that to this?
You could.
Or?
You, you, you certainly could. You're still going to have to issue.
This is one of the things that, I, I know I was talking with the former council member, Gene Martin, about it. This is one of the items that we, we definitely wanted to look at.
You could, you could do that, you're still going to issue debt for two million dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But still, just, you just have something.
Yeah.
To help offset.
It would, it would offset the, most of the issuance costs.
Good.
But you still have the issue with street. I, I know, Derek, the policy's going to be concrete.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not opposed to doing some kind of asphalt over there. I know it's more work for you, Michelle, and you guys, but I, I think some parts are going to absolutely have to have concrete, the bottom, the bottom outs, if you will, the, some of the drainage areas. Asphalt may not be the worst idea to go on that, especially if you get the drainage right, you could do it. You could probably save some money there, but there's really not that much of a split between asphalt and concrete, though.
That would get similar.
Yeah, I mean, you might, you might say fifteen percent.
Well, to get similar performance, I only have to go with, what, ten inches of asphalt or something?
Yeah, you'd have to.
And that's why they're comparable.
Right.
They're not, there's not a greater difference in price.
Yeah.
You've got to do separate.
So if we did asphalt or concrete, which one would handle the erosion challenges better, and would hold up better in the long term? So that way, we get the best bang for the.
The concrete would be better.
Concrete.
However, either one is going to require some, you're going to have, you know, you're not going to have your, your grass roadside ditches for the most part. You're going to have some other kind of better controlled ditch line, so, concreters.
So, that's the, the challenge that we're at. I mean, that water line's, it's, it's going to go kaput at some point, and that's when, that's when the day of reckoning comes. Yeah, I, and we didn't even get into this, and, and if you're, if you're watching this off of Squaw Creek, it's going to be a logistical nightmare, because getting, the traffic control is going to be, no matter what we come up with, it's going to be a challenge. Because Squaw Creek is the point of egress.
So to get traffic data, traffic studies, how, you know, are you going to, you're going to need some budget allocation for that, or what's, how do we, how do we pack that, just to get data for this?
I think Derek's going to work for free, but.
I'm not, I'm not certain you need that, but if you, but if you wanted to do that, you'd have to get traffic counts, you'd put counters out. I mean, that by itself is not a significant cost, and even, we did it on, when we did Ranch House.
Yeah.
We did, we set up traffic counters and did a traffic analysis, but it wasn't a, an extensive analysis. But you could get a count, I, I, you know, it's, it's fairly apparent that the, the traffic on that would be coming from the neighborhoods, but, but it'd be easy enough to get a, get a count. It wouldn't take.
I think with the improvements to Ranch House, the concrete on Ranch House, people are hitting it, they're coming out, and they're, I know people in Old Ford come out and make a left, and they hit Ranch House as fast as they can.
Right. Anybody coming from the north that'll have an option to go down Crown, you know, the next few years, right?
Yes. Yes. Squaw Creek's going to be more of a collector's street for residential than it is. I think maybe five, six, seven years ago, it was kind of a cut-through.
Right.
But with the improvements, we've made Ranch House, with the improvements we're going to make to Crown, I don't think you're going to see as much traffic over there. Which is why asphalt was always something I was curious about, because, but.
There's nothing wrong with asphalt.
Yeah.
It's just, for, for the cost difference, for budgeting purposes, it's.
Is the juice worth the squeeze? That's the question, so.
So for next steps, what, what do we need to do? I mean, well.
I can look into, we can look at, I think we could separate, split this debt out into two different functions. So you've got the enterprise fund for the water lines, and, and certainly, we can use some of those ARPA funds. We can use those funds to, to help offset that cost. You're still going to have to have issuance. I think even, you couldn't do a PIF right now through the Water Development Board, whichever way you're going to get your lowest rates for a project like this. If you started today, you might, you might get approval and funding in twelve months, eighteen?
Twelve.
Yeah, I mean, you, you'd get competitive interest rates through Water Development Board to take care of the water, the water line component of this. And we haven't even talked about sewer, but certainly the water line. The street component would have to be, it would have to be a, a interest-in-sinking, general fund, tax-backed debt. And so that would, that's going to definitely do something with your interest-in-sinking rate. This is the cliff that we're talking about here in a couple of years, although that cliff is starting to flatten out somewhat. I think if you started now, I mean, just going off of what we did on the PIF for a number of other projects, if you started now, getting the water funding is the first step, and then the street repair is the second one. To your point, you don't want to repair, repair the street, rip it up, and put water lines.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you're, two, three-year turnaround, get watered, would be my guess.
Yeah. Can you, you think that's, you think that electrical PVC gray pipe, you think she's got enough in her for another three or years?
It's pretty thin, isn't it?
Buy lots of clamps.
We, we have lots of clamps on hand, because every hill is leaking at some point in the process.
Yeah.
All right, so what do we need to do tonight, then, to take the next step?
If y'all, if, there's really no official action, y'all just tell us to start preparing a PIF, we can.
Start preparing a PIF.
Yeah. Okay. Probably that costs nothing to do, it's a project information form, two-page form.
And then I, I still think it'd be a good idea just to understand the traffic patterns and data. I think we ought to take a step there and do that as well.
If, if you want a traffic count, you can get, we can do that for less than two thousand dollars.
Okay.
You want to authorize that?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a traffic cap, not exceed three thousand dollars.
Okay.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
All right, well, that was the last item on the agenda for the evening. Starting out with any city council comments?
It's hot out, so.
Yeah.
For, I guess Mayor will comment, as I, the mayor pro Tim Tim, or whatever you want to refer to me as. It, as it is getting hotter out, suggest, you know, we continue to look at water usage. Thankfully, we do have the line from Fort Worth, but just continue to monitor watering in your yards, and don't be excessive. We have the water, we don't want to go ahead and put taxations on that that we, that aren't necessary. So, and then thank you to everyone for walking through this process with me tonight. It's a new experience, for sure, but a lot of good discussion, and just grateful for the citizens that speak, our council members, and city staff that do such a great job, so greatly appreciated. City manager, comment?
Yes, just to kind of echo what you said about the water consumption, we're actually using over half a million a day from Fort Worth. We're allowed up to a million. We, we probably will hit that at some point in the next thirty days, maybe forty-five-ish, but still, water conservation is going to be important. I do not think we're going to see the end of this drought anytime soon. So it just seems like ever since I've been here, every odd-numbered year is extremely wet, and, or odd-numbered, yeah, odd-numbered years are wet, even-numbered years are dry. So that seems to be the pattern, but I'm glad, and I'm thankful we have Fort Worth. I'm glad your staff, and looking at Michelle, I'm glad you guys are out there doing this. They do a fantastic job at Public Works. If you haven't been out there, you need, you need to go pay them a visit. Want to give some kudos to Rose Hoffman. She attended the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers State Conference, and she was a speaker at one of their breakout sections, sessions, about best practices in small communities. Basically, how do you run a communication shop when you're a one-man band? And during that conference, Rose put some of her projects up for consideration, and out of the one-person departments in the state of Texas, the city of Willow Park, i.e. Rose, finished in the top ten for 2022. One of the, one of the comments that one of the judges sent me was, solid and professional work, you are making good use of your best assets, and are clearly well-organized. Good use of technology, too. I am officially impressed. So congratulations, Rose. Thank you for what you do.